Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, May 10th, 2021, meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Much allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests for changes to the agenda? Entertaining motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Higgins, do I have a second?
I will second.
Second, Commissioner De Sanctus, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on, we have the minutes from the meeting held on Monday, April 12th, 2021. Any requests for edits or concerns about the minutes? Not seeing any entertaining motion to approve the minutes.
A motion?
A motion from Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second from Commissioner Farr, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Public hearings this evening, it looks like we have three on the agenda. The first one is a code amendment for parking. This is a request for amending City Code Chapter 11 relating to parking stall and aisle size, amend City Code Chapter 11 relating to multifamily parking requirements. Julie, would you take us through this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, staff is presenting to you this evening, three different code amendments. The first one that we would like to talk with you about relates to parking. And the parking is actually a twofold request. The first request talks about dimension of parking stall and aisle size, and then we'll move into discussions about specific parking requirements for multifamily housing. So I do have a PowerPoint that I would like to share with the group. The first requirement is, as I stated earlier, with regard to the parking stall size and drive aisle width. Currently, 90-degree stalls are required to be 19 feet in depth, and drive aisles are required to be 25 feet in width. Staff is proposing that those dimensions be changed from 19 feet to 18 feet, and from 25 feet to 24 feet. So as you can see, all of the other requirements that are noted in this table are not proposed for change, it is just those two that are proposed for change. And that's largely because, as developments have come before the Planning Commission and City Council, this has been a routine request of developments. And typically, when staff sees, or the Planning Commission sees, routine or frequent requests of the same issue, that's an indication that it's time to take a look at our code and see if it needs to be updated. So staff is proposing these amendments, and has found that these dimensions certainly are functional in the approved developments where they've been put in place. The second portion of the code amendment that staff wants to talk with you about is multifamily parking requirements. Currently, in our city code, we provide parking requirements for multifamily uses at a very simple level, just two parking stalls for every unit, and one of those two has to be enclosed. There is no differentiation between types of multifamily units. So staff is proposing that we would keep, as a part of our code, two stalls per dwelling unit, with half of those required to be enclosed, with the exception of efficiency or studio units. And staff is proposing that that requirement drop to one stall per dwelling unit, and again, half of all the spaces to be enclosed. As you can imagine, that's largely because efficiencies in studios don't tend to house large groups of people that have more than one vehicle per unit. In addition, staff is proposing to take a look at senior housing. As commissioners know, we've had a handful of senior projects come before the Planning Commission and Council in the past few years, and they've included waiver requests, because the parking requirements for senior housing are largely different than what they are for, I'm going to say, general occupancy type of multifamily projects. So what you're seeing on this screen is that the, I'm going to say, the top-left graph indicates what independent living parking requirements are, how many stalls per unit are required in the communities that are listed in that graph. So you can see a handful of our local communities in the metro area, ranging anywhere from half a stall to two stalls per unit for independent living. As well as the graph to the right provides what the standards are for nursing home, or skilled nursing, whether that's assisted living, memory care, true nursing home in the more traditional sense, what the requirements are. Staff is proposing that the code be amended to provide for parking requirements where that star is indicated on the graph. So, for instance, independent parking requirements, we are proposing one stall per unit, and for the nursing home parking requirements, it is a fraction, basically four, we'll go to the next slide, it's easier to read, independent or active senior living is one stall per dwelling unit, plus half a stall per dwelling unit to address general parking and guest parking. Again, half of all spaces to be enclosed. And then, any of that nursing type of parking needs is one stall per four beds, plus one space for employee on the largest shift. Again, half of those spaces to be enclosed. Staff, as you saw, did research many other communities, the majority of those communities also did require enclosed parking stalls, consistent with what Eden Prairie is proposing to maintain, and what is currently in city code. And I just wanted to share with you, this parking table was provided in your staff report. There was an error, just a typographical error in the one on your staff report, so we did prepare a revised table for your reference. So what this table does is it takes a look at recent senior projects, and it provides, or it lists the project by name across the top, and then down the side, you'll see how many parking stalls were approved, and how many would have been required under the current code. And then, we move down into what would, under the proposed code language, what would the total parking be required? So for instance, you can see Applewood Point provided 162 parking stalls. If the code amendment that's proposed this evening were in place at the time they went through the project, their parking requirement would have been 150. And that's the analysis that continues on through the graph. So you can see that the proposed code amendment gets much closer, if not meets the requirements, based on what recent projects have come forward with. With that, staff is recommending approval of these changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions for Julie? Commissioner Farr?
I'll float one out there. I agree with all these recommendations, Julie, that you're making for this particular code amendment, including, you know, the dimensional sizes of the stalls, meeting the Urban Land Institute, which I think is a great effort, as well as your differentiation of different housing types, especially senior housing. The thought crossed my mind about adaptive reuse, decades from now, when the next series of planning commissioners and council members are in front of us looking at adaptive reuse of senior living, because the bubble has passed with baby boomers, causing all of these senior living facilities to be built in the first place, are they going to be turning back to market rate, or something else, hotels, apartment buildings, or something else besides senior living? And at first, I thought, well, I'm struggling with that, and what do we do about the loss of parking? And then, I realized that maybe in the future, we're going to have better circulation for vehicles in general, with, besides single-family and single-occupant vehicles. I guess what I'm trying to say, multimodal transportation options and things like that, that I think will come in and fill that gap. And so, I just wanted to throw that out there, to see if you agreed with that, or, of course, other commissioners thought that would be an issue as well, but I'm settled with that after thinking about it further.
The discussion.
I hadn't thought about that implication for, you know, over the time, that we won't need perhaps some of those senior units, and that we'd be looking for another use for that particular development location, but it's hard to kind of foresee exactly how that'll play itself out, but presumably, we'll figure something out with the first one, and then kind of get ready for others that come. And certainly, if we can get multimodal uses of transportation encouraged in the process, that would probably be something we'd look to as well, so.
Commissioner De Sanctus?
Yes, I, a couple of comments. I think, number one, in the short run, so five to 10 years out, we're looking at vehicles that may be, maybe not accommodated by the dimensions that you're discussing, for example, metro mobility vehicles, circulator vehicles, jib needs and shuttles, that may more commonly occupy space for senior living and assisted living, but it's not it is. In the long run, I would agree with Commissioner Farr, that we'll probably see a lessening of need for senior living, per se, but I think the need for multi-unit dwellings will continue to increase. So that's one issue. The second issue is, how will this impact space, parking space, dedicated to scooters, electric scooters, to bicycles, and other invasions that are becoming more common on our public streets?
Julie?
Mr. Chair, you want me to answer that?
If you would, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner De Sanctus, with regard to parking needs for bicycles, or scooters, or other motorized types of transportation, in some sense, that could be accommodated within these requirements, in other sense, it might be a little more unique. So for instance, bike parking, bicycle, you know, actual pedal parking, pedal bicycles. We are certainly working to encourage those, and include those, you've seen them in multiple projects as they've moved forward, in the town center and TOD zoning districts, those are a requirement. And certainly, you know, we're seeing as a part of any town center or TOD projects, that would be part and parcel of the initial request. Now, with regard to the scooters, or vehicles of that nature, you know, certainly, parking could be accommodated for those within the parking stalls that are already provided in more of the traditional vehicle nature, there, depending on the project, there might need to be a more designated or unique area to park those types of vehicles at, but certainly, they can be accommodated within the project.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Farr? If I could add a little commentary to Commissioner De Sanctus's comment, which was very keen on the different sizes of vehicles, that's a very popular accommodation in zoning ordinance in the southern half of the United States, where they don't get a lot of snow. And us northern states have a tendency to acknowledge their existence during weather that allows the smaller vehicles, like motorcycles, and bicycles, and scooters, knowing full well that then the other six months of the year, those same people are driving four-wheeled cars. And so, it's a great gesture for southern states to allow different stall sizes in their zoning ordinances, but probably not for the northern part of the country where we live.
Other comments?
I guess I just add, I like that, just looking back a year, a couple of years that we've done, this is in line with the waivers we've already approved, so I think it makes sense. And I think, looking forward, hoping light rail, and that walking mile, and some of those other multimodal transportations continue to advance. And then, I think it also, I saw that St. Paul and Minneapolis, I think, are talking about even reducing parking even more, so I think probably at some point, we're going to be more aggressive to have more equitable housing opportunities, so I think this reduction's in line with where we've been, and probably in the foreseeable future as well, so.
I don't know if anyone else has any comments or questions?
This is Commissioner Marcus.
Commissioner Marcus?
I would just add, too, as we think about the future and being sustainable, that the reduction of hard pavement, if it makes sense for the building type and the functionality, I don't want to be short on parking, of course, but just thinking about how we can be more sustainable, and reducing that hard footprint, I think is a positive thing for the future.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this proposal, please do so now. I don't see anyone on site. Do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion for Commissioner Higgins to close, do I have a second? Second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Marcus. All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing's closed. Further discussion? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to recommend approval for code amendment for parking, based on recommendations from staff report dated May 10th, 2021.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Farr, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And would anyone like to abstain? All right, that has passed. Moving on this evening to our second public hearing, this is code amendment for group usable open space, request for amending City Code Chapter 11 relating to group usable open space. Julie, will you take us through this one as well?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, again, staff is recommending some changes to the code with regard to group usable open space. Currently, group usable open space is required for the RM and RM 6.5 and RM 2.5 zoning districts, so the multifamily districts, at a rate of 1,000 square feet per unit, or 600 square feet per unit. Again, this is in an area of the code where, as projects have moved forward over the last couple of years, staff has seen that there's just an inability for the projects to accommodate that level of group usable open space onsite. And frankly, because of the nature of the language in the code, it has been interpreted and applied inconsistently over the past decades. So staff is before you this evening, trying to clean this language up, make it a little more consistently applied, as well as meeting the trends and development patterns that we currently see in, within our community. So staff has taken a look at a variety of different projects that were approved over the last several years, and as you can see in your staff report, the group usable open space of those projects that have been approved averaged about, I believe it was 210 square feet per unit. Now, staff has been applying and bringing forward to the Commission and Council for their consideration, projects that include both outdoor and indoor facilities. So for instance, a workout room, or a rooftop patio, a swimming pool, a dog park outside, benches, or flower gardens, those types of things outside would all count towards group usable open space, the key being that it's accessible by all residents in the project. In addition, we took a look at some of our neighboring communities throughout the metro, as to how they were applying those standards, and what types of square footages or percentage of site area were being used. As, through our research, we found some communities apply a percentage of the lot area in order to figure out usable open space, others, like Eden Prairie, will assign a requirement of a square footage per unit. So staff is proposing to, with the proposed language, to provide for 150 square feet of group usable open space per unit, and that is a little bit below that average that we talked about, it is also a little bit below what the norm was that we've seen in doing our research, however, in talking with other communities, they're experiencing the same problem that we are, in that they're struggling to come up with 300 to 400 square feet of usable open space per unit. So they are also going to be looking in the future to revise this requirement and decrease that amount. So staff is proposing a couple of amendments, one, to drop that number down to 150 square feet per unit, and also to provide some more clarity to the definition by revising it to read that it is usable open space is land and area, land area and facility specifically designed and designated and developed for outdoor and/or indoor active recreation or passive recreation, social activities, and leisure use. The definition goes on to give some specific examples of what might be counted towards usable open space, and what may not be counted towards usable open space, just to provide that clarity as projects and development standards ebb and flow over time, as there are changes in the application, that there is a consistency within the community from project to project. So staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions from, for Julie, from the commissioners? Well, while we're thinking about it, maybe I'll just go to the public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this amendment, please do so now. We still don't have anyone online, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. So seeing nobody, all right, entertaining motion to close the public hearing, and then we can have discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
All right, motion from Commissioner Farr to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Second from Commissioner De Sanctus, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing's closed. Any discussion or questions anyone would like to have?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Farr?
I'll start off, again, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I agree specifically and conceptually with the effort to lower the group open space, as staff indicated. And further, I was thinking about one of the items on the new list, as they define the spaces that qualify for usable open space, specifically the comment about rooftop decks. Those are, in my opinion, underused, and in an effort to promote further green architecture and movement towards a carbon-neutral environment in the future, I would promote some way to incentivize development, builders and developers, to use rooftops as features to qualify for this group open space requirement, more than what we already do. I think it's challenging on certain buildings that are especially low-rise wood-framed, they're not made, the roofs aren't structurally sound necessarily for a group gathering, and that also includes an elevator extension up there to provide accessibility. So there are costs and challenges, along with making a rooftop flat and usable, as opposed to a sloped conventional, you know, rafter roof. So therefore, I believe some incentive might be warranted. And again, just to float this out there to the Commission, I like the numbers that Julie has proposed, however, it would be really nice if there would be some stepped limit, where maybe it was down to 300 or 250 square feet per unit as a base, but then if the builder or developer could utilize a rooftop area, and he goes through that expense to do so, I would give them bonus points for that, and drop it down to 150 or 100, or something like that. And again, I don't know what the right numbers are necessarily, but I thought that would be maybe one way to help promote sustainability. It would reduce the heat island effect, that again, causes all sorts of issues in our environment. So I guess I'd like to just, to others for your consideration. Thank you.
Thoughts about that from Commissioner Farr, anybody?
I hadn't thought enough about the rooftop effect, because I just didn't think of the possibility that you could foresee, you could foresee to do that ahead, you know, in the design, and then if there was a bonus that the city might want to look toward, as architecture and all the other aspects of development start to address that option, you know, I don't have anything foreseen as to what it would look like, but I think it's a, I think it's a good option.
This is Commissioner Marcus.
Commissioner Marcus?
I also agree, I think Commissioner Farr has a great idea for promoting sustainable building amenities that are attractive to people who want to live in those spaces, and I don't know, maybe Julie can comment, if the city's considering anything like that, or if any other surrounding communities have similar type incentives.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, staff in researching the nine other communities that we took a look at, did find one community, Bloomington specifically, requires, I believe, I'll get these numbers right, I think they require 300 square feet of usable open space per unit, but if you have a rooftop area that is 400 square feet in size or more, that's accessible to all residents, that area by itself can, regardless of its size, can count for 50% of the required open space. So from a staff perspective, we've not gone back and kind of done a test case scenario on some of the local projects, to see what would those numbers, you know, shake out to be after we've applied a rooftop deck, I know several of the projects do include a rooftop deck, Elevate has one, Paravel has one, I believe Southview Senior Living has either a rooftop deck or a patio, I guess I can't recall 100% off the top of my head. But that was the only community that we found that had that type of incentive, and it did have specific metrics tied to it. Certainly, if the Planning Commission wishes to dive deeper into this, staff can go back and take a look at how a requirement like that would have impacted, or would have applied to previous projects that have already been in place, or we can certainly take some guidance from the Commission, and, you know, fine-tune that, if that's the pleasure of the Commission before it goes to City Council.
So the cities you looked at, that was the only one that had that incentive?
That is correct.
But did you, did you talk to anybody about, it was something they considered in the past, or not? By chance?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, because it wasn't, none of the code requirements specifically talked to rooftop decks, in our conversations with staff members and other communities, that may not have, that detail may not have come completely out in the wash, if you will. Now, certainly through the PUD process, if somebody were to come forward and request a waiver for a reduction in group usable open space, even with the new amendment, and they had a rooftop deck, that would be something we could take a look at through the PUD process. But the intention here, I think, based on Commissioner Farr's comments, is really to kind of communicate that early in the process, so that the developers are... kind of communicate that early in the process so that the developers are aware of what is being incentivized through the process, what would be allowed by right.
Good point.
I don't want to speak for Commissioner Farr, but, so please correct me if I spoke out of turn on that one.
No, thank you. You summarized my position well. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, first I have a question.
Mr. Chair.
The recommendation or the comment made by Commissioner Farr was a, was a great one about the incentive for the rooftop. That's a pretty good idea to provide as we look at this change. Is any more thought about what that would potentially look like when we look at incentives?
Specifically, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, yeah. Was your question, have I looked at specifically the numbers that I threw out? Was that your question?
Not, not more so the numbers, but just some ideas when we say we're looking at potential providing incentives. Any idea what something like an incentive would look like, or?
Yeah, the incentive that I was suggesting would be a further reduction in usable open space, as opposed to having everybody go down to 150 square feet per unit, that maybe there was a different threshold for everybody, but then there were bonus points that were optionally available, not mandated, but bonus points available, people that go above and beyond. And so that was my theory, anyway. It could probably, the incentive could take form in other aspects. You know, frankly, on a wider scale, and I don't want to get too much off topic here, but the city could possibly take positions of other incentives about the use of building materials that are, have a low carbon impact, energy efficiencies above and beyond what the state mandates in our Minnesota Building Code, and other sustainable features of a development. And I don't think it's, that's not on the table here today. I just saw an opportunity tonight about the group usable open space, and it seems to me like we're selecting some numbers, certainly not arbitrary at all, because staff's done a wonderful job of analyzing the surrounding areas, supply and demand. We want to be competitive, and yet we don't want to be penal in our, in our application of numbers. Development has to be relatively friendly. I was thrilled to read in the staff report that 82% of the housing of Eden Prairie is within a half miles of parkland. It further tickled my brain to think, well, maybe, maybe there's another incentive that if they're already building within a block or two of an open space that has a significant amount of open space, maybe that further lets them off the hook of complying with the number of square feet because of the availability and proximity. I think that would be a tough metric to manage through the planning process. I have empathy for staff there, I think, so it's a germ of an idea. I just wanted to throw that out there. But, you know, you can kind of see where those things head. So again, I'm looking for opportunities to, you know, follow in the footsteps of the city councils charging to minimize our carbon footprint within the city, and I saw an opportunity.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, can I offer a comment?
Yes.
I would just like to kind of reiterate the point to the commission that this amendment is with regard to the RM zoning districts or the multifamily zoning districts. Again, the TOD, the Transit Oriented Development, and the Town Center zoning districts do have their own requirements with regard to usable open space. So those areas where we're going to see probably the most dense and urban-style developments, maybe those projects, to Commissioner Farr's point, that are built that, in a structural way that can support those rooftops, that's not under consideration as a part of this amendment, because this amendment is not addressing the TOD and Town Center zoning districts. So if that helps you in your deliberations at all, I just want to throw that out.
That's a good point.
What do you think about that, Commissioner Farr?
I appreciate staff's comment in that regard. As I mentioned earlier, just from a construction impact, I don't see a developer that's putting up a standard three-story wood-framed building on a lot, and I don't know how many of our leftover lots that we're talking about are, would get that type of a treatment. Most developers aren't going to spend the extra money to reinforce the roof, flatten it out, extend the elevator, to put a patio or something like that up on top of the building to meet this requirement to get those bonus points. I doubt that they would do that, but I don't know that. I just, I just doubt it. Like staff mentioned, it's the buildings that reach that six-story height, which is kind of the magical, things above that don't get built out of wood frame anymore, and they get built out of concrete or steel, and then they're strong enough to host rooftop areas. The budget is, you know, per square foot is a little bit extended, and there are some dollars available for that amenity. Those amenities are very much in high demand, so I think, I think that's a reasonable thing to know about. So if staff is suggesting that maybe the TOD districts will have more of those opportunities to have taller buildings, and therefore, the budget could sustain some of these features, that's great. Then it'll be market-driven. I was trying to do something more than waiting for the market. I was trying to incentivize ourselves internally for those developers who might want to hear this and be able to jump on our bandwagon. So I'm a no means, I don't want to die on the sword here. I wanted to have this as a thoughtful conversation, and if nothing else, just have the meetings reflect that I think we all are, I don't want to speak for anybody else. I want to promote sustainability. I can imagine that Commissioner De Sanctus is jumping out of his seat waiting to agree as well. So I'm interested to hear more, more from others, but thank you for listening.
Can I ask you a follow-up question? So looking at the list of, these may include spaces such as, are garden areas not to that level of rooftop deck, as Farr is trying to incentivize? Would they be part of that list, or is it?
The goal is to allow developers to use as much of the land as they need to for surface parking and building floor area. And so they're always trying to pack the proverbial 10 pounds into the site. And so if we're imposing upon them an open space requirement, that's yet one more thing that they have to carve out on the site, on grade, that they would rather use for other purposes. You know, we're taking away building setbacks, we're taking away parking setbacks, stormwater management takes up a lot of square footage, and they haven't even gotten to their parking lot and building yet. And so most developers don't think that there's a half of an acre or more on top of the building that is just doing nothing more than reflecting the sun's rays or absorbing it, in this case, that could be used for other purposes. So that, I want to unlock that and bring it forth so that people have that awareness early on.
So I guess just a follow-up. But if they were able to allocate more space for garden area in their plan, you wouldn't want to incentivize them for that, if they're able to?
On grade?
Yeah. So just the rooftop?
Yeah, that's where the benefit is, is if they can move it from, from grade up to the rooftop, then that opens up grade for everything else that the zoning ordinance is asking for. Right? And that's when they come in and ask for all these waivers. They're asking for a setback waiver, they're asking for fewer trees, they're asking for, you know, you name it, because they can't fit everything on the site.
Commissioner?
I have a thought, it just came to mind, because I have personally experienced it. My daughter lives in a town home in a very densely settled area of Denver, but outside the downtown, just to the northeast. And she has a very small town home. It's just two bedrooms, two baths, and so forth. But there's a staircase up to the roof from her own unit, but it adjoins others that are right along with her. The only thing separating them is a low wall, other than the more substantial walls around the edges of the building. But from unit to unit, it's almost as if we're just looking down the road here and just seeing people. And that happens. You know, I was not there, or haven't been there, when it's been summertime and all of that kind of thing. But what I do know is that they made special arrangements on that roof for garden types of activity, and she's using it for that. And there are some kind of structures that make it amenable to things like hanging big containers, not on the ground, but actually elevated along the edges of her unit and the others. And it's really very amazing how people come up with, to do with that. And because they can see each other, it's kind of like, it isn't just that little space that each owner is doing on their own. They're kind of aware of each other now, because she's been there quite a few years. So it's become sort of a community kind of experience. It doesn't really get us to the points that we're trying to handle tonight, but I just thought it would point out. And they're building more and more of those types of units, I've noticed, in Denver.
Sure, sure, sure. And Mr. Chair, if I can follow up on that point as well, I'm sorry, but I think staff did a good job of itemizing both exterior and interior amenities that are available. And again, selecting our Minnesota just seasonality with the weather. It's not mandated here in our zoning ordinance, and I'm not suggesting it, but I think it's important that there's a blend of indoor and outdoor spaces that comply when projects come through. I'd hate to see a project where 95% of their GUOS is all outside or inside conversely for that very reason. So again, I don't think we have to regulate that, because that hasn't been a problem yet, and staff may agree with that or disagree, but that's my opinion at this time.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in response to Commissioner Farr's comments, that is certainly something that staff works with the developers on to encourage that combination of both indoor and outdoor uses. Of course, you know, when we're talking about senior facilities, by the nature of that product, there is a fair amount of indoor facility, that, facilities rather, that are provided. But certainly, we want to make sure that there are outdoor opportunities as well for those warm weather months, to make sure that folks have the opportunity to get, get out of their building and enjoy all of that natural area that the city already has. Because as we talked about in the memo, so many of our residential areas are already very proximate to either parks or trails or natural resource areas, and folks want to be able to connect to that and get out to those areas. So even the conversation that you're having as a commission this evening about a rooftop incentive is helpful to staff as we begin to have conversations or continue to have conversations with multifamily developers and letting them know this is the discussion that has occurred. Here's something that the commission has talked about in the past, here's what they are looking to try and incentivize in the future. So even just the conversation is helpful to educate developers as they come to the table and, or come to the Zoom screen and want to meet with us on projects as we move forward.
Well, Commissioner Farr, do you, I guess there's three options, as is, or do you want to request staff comes back with a number, or do you want to just try to move it forward and capture something around the conversation about that?
I'm quite satisfied with fellow commissioners' responses to the idea and staff's willingness to champion this forward without necessarily putting a block on the issue at hand in front of us.
I agree.
So I'm perfectly satisfied with that. So I won't be making amendment suggestion for a motion. But I would like to maybe just follow up with one final thing, maybe, before we lock this one up, and that is a comparison. Julie, maybe two years ago, we had a project in front of us on Hennepin Town Road, maybe about a half a mile south of Anderson Lakes Parkway. I think it was a three-story fitting into a lot that was, had some wetlands and, you know, which lot I'm talking about. And I remember what I'll call in their backyard, which is the west, there were some wetland challenges, and they had to stay away from trees and whatnot, and they had a walking trail that went from their parking lot, just looped around, through the woods and back, okay? So it was a dedicated walking trail that started on their lot and ended on their lot. They also had a public sidewalk along Hennepin Town Road that maybe was there, maybe they had to build to maintain connectivity or whatever. So could you clarify for me, anyway, and maybe it should make its way into the definition of, how would you compute something so narrow and linear, like a walking path on site? Do you think a developer would ask for adding up all the square footage of his pathway that meanders around the backside of his building, even though that's not a destination per se, but it's a transitional amenity?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, for an example like that, certainly, I believe that that is something that would meet the intended definition of usable open space as it's proposed before you this evening. So what staff would work with the developer to do is to calculate what is that square footage, even though it's more linear in nature than it is a traditional dedicated space like a community room or a garden area. We would calculate that square footage area as well, over the total of the distance, and apply that to the requirement as well. So that is certainly something that, not only in that project, but in other projects, those types of connections have counted toward usable open space on the project.
Okay, good, fair enough. Thank you for that clarification.
I don't know, did anyone, Commissioner De Sanctus or Commissioner Marcus, anyone have any comments? I don't, I don't know if I missed it someone. Don't see any hands or further discussion, or anyone would like to make a motion on
Is the public hearing still open?
I closed it while everyone was thinking about the question. I think.
That's good, that's good. Well, I'll go ahead, Mr. Chair, and I'll make a motion to recommend approval for code amendment for gross area site per dwelling unit, based on recommendations from staff reports dated May 6, 2021.
All right. Motion from Commissioner Farr. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Marcus with a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And would anyone like to abstain? Okay, that moves forward.
Did I, did I make the wrong motion?
No.
No. Group usable open space?
I think I said the gross area site per dwelling unit on C.
Yeah, I think I was.
Fair, to be honest, I wasn't, I didn't catch the exact detail.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to go back to the record. I believe I cited the wrong motion.
All right. Do I have someone who wants to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make an amended motion. I apologize on the issue before us, is the code amendment for group usable open space. My motion should have read, move to recommend approval for code amendment for group usable open space based on recommendations from staff report dated May 6, 2021.
All right. I have amended motion from Commissioner Farr. Do you have a second?
I will second the motion.
All right. Second on the amended motion from Commissioner De Sanctus. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain on this one? Okay, moves forward. Last item on the public hearing agenda tonight, code amendment for gross area site per dwelling unit. This is a request for amending City Code Chapter 11 relating to gross area site per dwelling unit. Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is our last code amendment this evening. Again, this, like the others, this amendment, or this provision, rather, has been in place since the code was adopted in 1969. So in 1969, you can imagine the development patterns of Eden Prairie and where we were at as a community in our development history is much different than where we are at today. The gross site area per dwelling unit, staff is proposing to strike that and remove it from the city code, largely because it is a redundant provision. The zoning ordinance already outlines what is the density allowed by the zoning ordinance. The comprehensive plan also identifies what is the density allowed for each land use category in the comprehensive plan. And through the development review process, we review for compliance with the zoning ordinance density as well as the comprehensive plan density. The gross site area per dwelling unit is, again, repetitive. The gross site area per dwelling unit is again repetitive and redundant to those, and quite frankly, if you do the math for the density and then the gross site area, it doesn't always line up, so it's very confusing for developers as they're coming in and trying to put their plan together. So staff is recommending that this provision be struck from the zoning ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Questions for Julie? Not seeing any. Why don't we go to the public hearing? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this amendment, please do so now. There's nobody in the audience, and I assume there's nobody online?
No, sir.
Okay, great. All right, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion from Commissioner Higgins to close. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second from Commissioner Taylor to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. Further discussion, or would someone like to make a motion on this one?
I'll move to recommend approval of the code amendment for gross area site per dwelling unit based on recommendations from the staff report dated May 6, 2021.
All right, I have a motion for Commissioner Higgins. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second from Commissioner Taylor. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Okay, amendment moves forward. That's the last public hearing this evening. Next up, we have a planner's report. Anything, Julie?
Nothing tonight, sir.
All right, and do we have any members' reports? I'm not seeing any, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
All right, motion to adjourn from Commissioner Farrar. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second from Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.